Deleke?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
First on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding ordinance thirteen dash oh four for the purposes of creating section twenty-two point oh five one five, wellhead protection area overlay district for city well number five. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, this is a requirement that the Department of Natural Resources has for communities when they dig new wells. And since we have the new well number five that just started, we've adopted this or proposing to adopt this ordinance. It places restrictions on the use of properties within the area surrounding that well. There's a map at the back that kind of indicates the area that would be included in this. There's a zone A and a zone B. The zone A is basically six hundred feet and the zone B is twelve hundred feet from the wellhead itself. The intent is to place restrictions on uses that may have the potential to create groundwater contamination. Primarily it's geared towards underground storage tanks and that type of thing, but there are other uses that are prohibited and some uses that are conditional. And these are the types of uses that may have the potential to create spills or use of chemicals or other types of conditions that may create a groundwater issue. So the whole intent is for us to have a little bit more control over what uses go in that area. As I mentioned, it's all geared towards protecting the groundwater. This proposed ordinance has been sent to all the property owners that are identified in that area. And we've had several public meetings regarding this at the Plan Commission. And I know Howard has met with a couple of property owners to address some of their concerns. Plan Commission has recommended approval. The Water and Sewer Commission has also recommended approval. And staff does recommend approval of the proposed ordinance. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, there were no indications of public statements in favor, against, or in general, council discussion.
Were the property owners that had raised questions, were they because there was opposition? Was it because they just didn't understand? Was it?
Initially, there was, I guess, questions about how it would impact their business. So that's when we, that was before they had the actual ordinance itself, so we sent them a copy of the ordinance. I don't know what conversations Howard had with them.
There was one property owner that was concerned about potential expansion of his business. And the requirement, on the one hand, for locating stormwater pond to manage stormwater, and on the other hand, being within this distance and not being allowed to have a stormwater pond. We believe, we have identified a solution where they can pipe their stormwater to a different location and be treated in a combined stormwater facility in the future outside of this area.
Other questions? Other discussion?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion to second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Common Council action?
Move to adopt ordinance number thirteen dash oh four, an ordinance creating section twenty-two point oh five one five, wellhead protection area overlay district for city well number five of the city of Platteville, Wisconsin.
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer a separate discussion in action. Item A is the minutes of the February twelfth, two thousand thirteen council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none tonight. Let me note that we could use some more applications, and we have openings for the Board of Review, Community Development Board, a couple Historic Preservation Commission alternates, and Ron Tree Gallery Board. Licenses are Class B beer for Herb Enterprises LLC for premises at forty-five North Third Street. Temporary Class B, Class B beer and wine license for Saint Augustine University Parish at one thirty-five South Hickory for Irish Festival on March eighth. Two-year operators licenses for premises, license to traffic in permitted malt beverages and intoxicating liquors, and taxi driver license. Are there any items there on which you'd prefer separate discussion in action?
Just a question on the D one?
Yes.
To Jan? Is that the one that was going to be Woodman manufacturer and then to Third Street here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would like that one, as I noted on the License Committee page, contingent upon passing all the required inspections.
Would you care to make a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. And motion carries. Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. The only person who'd like to speak is Ken Killian.
I'd like to present an invitation from the Historic Preservation Commission to attend historic dinner, which will be March eighth next week at the Trinity Episcopal Church. The purpose of the dinner is to raise funds so we can present historic expo next year, 2014. History-wise, we've had four such dinners, two at First English Lutheran and one at First Congregational Church, and this year at Trinity Episcopal Church. The dinner starts at 6:00 PM at 5:30 is a silent auction. A number of items have been donated. We call it historic dinner because it features a menu from years ago. This one is eighteen-sixties Midwest dinner. The dinner at First English was savory beef, which was a Civil War type of dinner. So if you're interested, please contact one of the members, myself, Todd Stratford, Robin Klein, or Christine Wonderland, or Arlene Sis. And so that's next week, 5:30, dinner at 6:00. And there's a tour of the building of the church at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next on the agenda is reports. We have committee reports. Plan Commission, Deleke, Becker?
Nothing to add.
Police and Fire Commission, I have nothing to add. Water and Sewer Commission, Deleke, Killian, Steiner?
Nothing.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Killian?
I believe Howard has something to say on this as far as renaming the park and possibly also Jordan. Howard, come up.
Okay. The Veterans Honor Roll Committee has proposed renaming City Park as Veterans Park or Veterans Memorial Park. There is a process that we are going through that will include citizen comment period to see what the citizens think of this. And it will go through all the formal channels, Parks Committee again, Plan Commission, and then back, then form to the council sometime later for possible action.
Thank you. And other reports, we have the Building Inspector's Report and Department Progress Reports. Are there any items there on which you have comments, questions, or would prefer to make a statement?
I have a question about the park naming. And is that a, is that a process that's defined by the city or is, I mean, is that a process we have in place?
It was a process that was proposed by Cindy Robles when she was here. I'm not sure whether or not that was formally approved, but we're using that as a guide.
Makes sense to start the park board and move ahead, see what they say. They're a good place to take some public input and see what people think.
Howard has something, Mike. He's got his hand up.
Okay. Okay. Other thing that I want to let people know of is that we have an oversized load scheduled to move through the city of Platteville down Water Street tomorrow, nine o'clock, give or take, depending on the weather. What it is, is it's a tank sitting on these dollies. The tank itself is eighty-nine feet long. With the trucks in front and back, it's a hundred and sixty-one feet overall. And it's seventeen feet, ten inches tall. And with a little bit of luck, we'll get some good photos of this going through the roundabout the way it's supposed to.
Going through literally, right?
No, it will go.
Go around.
It will go around the roundabout.
I don't believe that for a second.
We're removing, we're temporarily removing a couple of signs.
Oh, okay.
Get out of the way, and that's all we need.
Okay, yeah. Hope somebody has camera that can take some video.
We intend to.
Go right through, right over the top of it. Okay, thank you, Howard. Under action items tonight, we have resolution thirteen dash oh three authorizing the sale of not to exceed four point one seven five million dollars in general obligation securities. Duane, you want to briefly comment on that?
I mentioned this last time, and basically four million one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars going out for authorizing the sale of, and we'll be having the interest rates brought out at our next council meeting.
What? What did you say we would have at the next council?
Interest rates.
Oh, the interest rate.
I believe the majority of this is just refunding existing debt.
And how is the interest rate determined? I mean, you said you're waiting for it?
They're going off the sales. That's what Jeff Blonge, he'll be back presenting at the next council meeting.
Do we have to first approve doing this, then they go out for bids, and then we take the best bid? And that's where we come back and say, do we agree to accept that?
Right.
So we have to first approve it, and then it has to go out for that.
We're getting better interest rates than we would have gotten previously, we think.
We hope so.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of four point one seven five million general obligation securities. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
No question. Do you know of anything as far as sequestration affecting the interest rate in the future?
Not from where?
Not yet.
Not yet. Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B under action is ordinance thirteen dash oh five amending the official city traffic map, specifically the removal of school zone signs around OE Gray and Saint Mary's Schools. Do we have a staff comment on this briefly?
We have approximately thirty-eight school zone and speed limit signs in the vicinity of OE Gray and Saint Mary's Schools. These schools are no longer being used for, as, for schoolchildren for pre-K to grade twelve. So we're recommending removal of these signs. If they were ever reopening for those purposes, then we can amend the traffic map again to install zone, school zone signs under the law in effect at that time. We sent letters to the school district and Saint Mary's Parish, and basically they both are supportive as long as it would be relatively easy reinstatement, reinstate if things change.
Thank you. Would you care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance thirteen, amending the official traffic map for the removal of school zone signs around OE Gray and Saint Mary's.
Second. The motion is second. That was ordinance thirteen dash oh five. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C tonight under action is ordinance thirteen dash oh six, amending the official traffic map, specifically no parking for bus loading zone on Marquee Avenue.
Yes, UWP has their shuttle bus. They found out that for better access for their students, they would prefer to have the loading zone on Marquee Avenue. And so we've identified a location along Marquee Avenue just north of the crosswalk. And so we're requesting that, that they, that we be allowed to put up a bus stop sign there.
Questions for Howard?
Isn't there a loading zone on the east side of that building?
That's coming next.
Well, there's a pull-off that, that's there. That has never been signed, and as President Deleke mentioned, that's coming up later. But what this, they found is that rather than people going out the east door, most of the students are going out the west door towards Marquee Avenue. And so they felt that it was better utilization based on pedestrian traffic pattern.
Would you care to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D under action tonight is to designate eight thousand five hundred two dollars and forty-one cents of art board funds for various activities. I don't know if we have a champion of this idea or somebody who wants to speak to it. We have, I believe, Patrice Steiner. Packet here by Patrice.
Yeah, my recommendation is in the council packet. As I said in the, in my recommendation, I feel that the remaining arts board money should go to, because the Platteville Arts Board is a city board, I feel it should go to city entities that support the arts. And I was on the arts board, the common council liaison, back in two thousand and seven when the arts board did decide to make it their goal to support renovation of the auditorium. And that report also is in the council packet along with the cover letter to then-city manager Dave Burner. Like I said, my recommendation, the majority of it I'm recommending go to the auditorium, six thousand dollars. Because in the end, once, once the auditorium is renovated, it, it can be rented out there for, it's a source of revenue for the city. Also to Ron Tree Gallery, eight hundred dollars. Ron Tree Gallery is a very small operating budget, less than sixteen thousand a year, and it is difficult for them to do anything extra. So that was why I was recommending some funds go to Ron Tree Gallery. And art purchase for City Hall, eight hundred dollars. There are quite a few companies here in town that are purchasing original art and displaying it in their buildings. And I think it'd be a nice thing for the city to do that, too. And then Platteville Tourism Committee, I recommended four hundred dollars for a group sponsoring an art-related event sometime this year. And the Platteville Main Street Program, five hundred dollars for the two items that they're raising. They'd like to raise money for Music in the Park Program and the mural program. That leaves a balance of two dollars and forty-one cents. And I would say that two dollars and forty-one cents, if anyone wants to argue with me, also goes to the auditorium.
Several people indicate they'd like to speak. Jack Lidkey followed by Cheryl Schmider, followed by Marilyn Gottschalk. If you'd please come forward, state your name and local address, and tell us what's on your mind.
I'm not supposed to touch it, so it probably will work.
Here we go.
Directions from the leader. My name is Jack Lidkey. I'm the executive director for the Main Street Program at twenty South Fourth Street. I would just like to mention to the council again that the board of the Main Street Program at their direction, I've submitted to you a request for two amounts of this money. One is for support of the Main Street efforts with Music in the Park to make that a continuation for, hopefully for years to come. It's a cultural aspect of the community which we feel very strongly about, needs to be continued and nurtured. And the second part of that is funds for the actual art programs that have been initiated in the Main Street Program with the mural walk and now the installation of the sculptures for the functional bike racks in the downtown area. And as I indicated in that paragraph, that we would then develop a brochure to instigate a art walk through the downtown area. And we believe that that, those two endeavors are direct function of the arts expansion in the downtown area and in the cultural aspect of Platteville. I should also mention, too, that to the end, to continue the Music in the Park for our annual historic walk down Main in May, the committee has, our design committee has decided to contribute the proceeds from that walk to this fund for continuation of Music in the Park. Any questions?
So your total request is forty-five hundred?
That's correct. And we would second Oliveran Steiner's comments about the theater. We would believe the rest of the funds should probably go to the theater because that, too, is a functional art piece opportunity for the downtown area.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Schmider, six seventy Lancaster Street. I'm president of the Friends of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium. I would like to speak in favor of Patrice Steiner's proposal for the dispositions of funds for the arts board with the majority of the funds going to the municipal auditorium. If you reviewed the auditorium proposal in your packets, you can see the auditorium is in need of many improvements and that the arts board had identified the auditorium as a project it wanted to throw its support behind. It's important that you keep this in mind while deciding what to do with their money. All improvements to the auditorium to date have been done through the work of volunteers and funded without the use of any city tax dollars. These improvements, along with the future planned improvements, makes the space more usable as a community resource. With the ability of more groups to use the space, not only as a performance venue, but also as a meeting space and host to such events as speakers and potential film festivals. Aside from the community resource aspect, all improvements to the auditorium have the potential to increase the value of City Hall. Our hope for 2013 is to improve the sound quality of the auditorium. I recently had the opportunity to review the 2010 Arts Board Department Budget Summary. The 2010 program objectives for the arts board, as stated in this document, said in part, "The board changed their focus to support existing art organizations that work directly with the people of Platteville and to create new events that have the potential to actively involve more members of the community. More art for more people will enhance the lives of our citizens and our guests. Pioneering the good life can be more than a slogan. More art makes us all look better and feel better about ourselves." Within this same document, the arts board stated, "The arts board intends to continue researching avenues for repairs and improvements of the municipal auditorium and to remain active in promoting existing events and supporting other art organizations that work directly with the residents of Platteville." The principal function of the arts board in the same document states, "The Platteville Arts Board works to promote and support the arts in Platteville by networking among local art groups, working in partnership with organizations and artists to bring more art opportunities to the community, and sponsoring programs that work directly with local artists to create supportive environment in which the arts can flourish and enrich our community. By allocating the majority of the current arts board's dollars towards the continued renovation of the auditorium, this council can help to continue the legacy of creating that supportive environment." Do you have any questions?
Marilyn Gottschalk, two thirty-five Virgin Avenue. Cheryl and I did not collaborate on our presentation, so I'm afraid this is going to be some repetition. So bear with me. I am a former arts board member, and I am currently a member of the Friends of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium. A little bit of background, the Platteville Arts Board was created in nineteen seventy-nine, and it was meant to serve as an umbrella over various art groups in the city. And that, at that time, included the city band, the Platteville Corral, and ultimately the theater, Platteville Community Theater. The focus for the arts board, as Cheryl indicated, has shifted over the years. And for many years, the art board was, arts board was responsible for overseeing and organizing our festival of the arts. But I'm, I'm not sure about the date. Somewhere around two thousand and seven, the board decided to make the renovation of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium a priority. So under Gail Schwickrath, I've never been able to say her name practically, who was the chair at that time and who did a fantastic job on the arts board, the board. What am I doing?
See if we get the feedback to change here a little bit. You need to move over.
If you could step over here. You're hitting feedback with the speakers.
That's better so far. Anyway, we were talking about pronouncing your name.
Can I just not use it? Okay.
We're getting a lot of feedback there.
Under Gail, the arts board was responsible for a detailed proposal to the council for support to update the auditorium. And as Cheryl indicated, I think you have that in your packet. With the promise of partial funding from the Graham Fund money, a volunteer group was formed and has been working on this project, as she indicated. The seats have been replaced, the stage curtain is replaced, the auditorium has been repainted, and work is in progress to update the sound, lighting, and to replace the stage floor. I'm nearly done. We are asking the council to allocate the money left in the now-defunct arts board account to the theater to help us move closer to our goal of making the auditorium a space that's compatible with multiple uses by the whole Platteville community. I have personally no problem with the Main Street Program and their murals. The arts board at one point did support that and did allocate some money for that program. However, it is my feeling that the majority of that money really needs to go to the theater, and we, I promise you, would make very good use of it. So, any questions?
Can you tell me, has any Graham money been spent to date on the auditorium, or is that what's budgeted this?
Yes.
Okay.
A little bit.
Sixteen thousand.
Painting.
Sixteen thousand.
And the painting, by the way, has made the auditorium, it's very beautiful down there. If you haven't looked at it lately, go look. It's very nice.
And Marilyn, you talked about replacing the stage floor. I want to explain that that is Platteville Community Theater who's donating that money. That will not come out of the Graham Fund money.
That's right. No, no. That has been, that has, yes, donation by the Platteville Community Theater in conjunction, I believe, with the ballet people.
Theater of Ballet Arts, right. Because a new floor is very important to dancers.
Yes, right. And we, by the way, desperately want The Nutcracker back on our stage, but they can't dance on bumpy stage floor.
Well, while I think that the, the items that Jack was talking about are certainly noble, I still feel strongly that this is city, city money. For quite a few years, at least for the years I was on the arts board, probably starting from nineteen ninety-eight, the city provided, I believe it was about two thousand a year for the arts board operation. And I think it's time for the city to receive some return on that investment, their two thousand dollars a year. And I think this is a perfect way to do it, to apply those funds to arts-related items and events for the city. And Marilyn was talking about the seats. I do want to point out, too, that removing those seats, I don't know how many of you realize how much work that was. realize how much work that was. And not only how much work it was, it took about 12 people, but we found out, it was about a year and a half ago, the first week of June, that these seats were offered by state theaters. Dwayne DeYoung offered them and Jeremy Patton. We found out in early June that these seats were coming from Ohio. And we had, I think we were given the deadline of July 20th to remove them. And at the time, the Friends of the PMA, we didn't see how it could be done. However, they spent two solid weeks, mainly men like Dick Davies, Mike Willis, Cheryl's husband, Mike Schmider, Kurt Schlicker, I'm probably forgetting some people, Tony Hubble. Those men spent many hours removing those seats, an enormous amount of work, in the hottest part of the summer, crawling around on a dirty cement floor that's on a slant. And then, once the seats were removed, the rest of the group had to determine which ones were worth saving because we put them up for sale. And then the ones that were not worth saving, the seats had to be separated from the metal part. And then we recycled the metal part. I think, I think they were taken to Belmont and we got some, we got quite a bit of money just from the metal alone. But, you know, you want to talk volunteers, that was an enormous project and it was done within like six weeks. And those new seats are very nice, very comfortable, very wide aisles. And again, too, thanks to state theaters for providing them and also for providing the free installation of those. And seeing Connie Steinhaus sitting back there, it reminds me, our senior center director, we had, they had requested in the CIP a few years ago to buy a new van. And the council agreed to two $25,000 payments for two years in a row in the CIP. And the council required the senior center to raise $50,000 to pay for the other half of the van. And, you know, I think it's time that our, city money should stay with city, city entities.
Do you care to make a motion?
I have a question. So are you saying that the $25,000 for the senior center van didn't stay with the city? I'm trying to figure out what that meant.
No, I'm saying, we, we made, our senior centers raised $50,000 to buy a van. And now, the Main Street program is asking for city money, 4,500 of it, over half of it. The city money needs to stay with the city. We had a very tight budget, as you recall, last fall. We need, we need to retain these for city property.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I don't have a problem with that. I do have a question though. And that would be the, the two items in it. One would be the art purchases for City Hall in terms of $800, I'm not sure exactly with the current state of City Hall where we would put that. And the second one is, does the Platteville Tourism Committee have a process by which they could even figure out how to allocate? I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the Friends of the Municipal Auditorium, I'm just looking at the, those two in particular.
Well, I did talk to people on, on the Tourism Committee and they...
They have a process.
Okay, yes. An art purchase for City Hall, well, as I said in my recommendation, there are...
Oh, I, I don't, I don't deny anything you say in your recommendation. I'm just trying to think about an art purchase and a beautiful piece of art on some of the rather, on slightly spots that we have in this building.
Maybe they can cover up some cracks or something.
Right. We'll figure it out.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I move to designate the $8,502.41 to the entities that I have quoted or stated in my recommendation.
Including the $2...
$2.41 to the...
Yes, $6,002.41 to the municipal auditorium for renovation.
I'll second it. The motion is seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I have one comment. I would prefer the money that's designated for the Tourism Committee go to the Main Street program. The Tourism Committee has money coming in every year, what is it, about $55,000, something like that comes in, Dwayne? Every year? And then there's also, that's the 70%, and then there's 28% goes to the city. Is that correct? That's beyond the 55.
But it's not...
So there's money there for the Tourism Committee.
But it's the chamber that determines how that, that room tax money is spent.
The 70%, but not the 28.
Is the 28 segregated, Dwayne, or is it already allocated to something?
28% the council allocates.
Council's been doing that.
Part of our budget.
Right.
We put it into budget, even though it...
Is it undesignedated as of right now?
No, it's designated. It helps balance the budget. That's just...
So there's no 28% sitting there waiting to be spent? It's already helping balance the budget?
Right.
But it could be for another year.
It's a council decision, yes.
Council decision.
That would be next year then?
That'd be next year. So I would amend the motion to take the $400 from the Tourism Committee and add that to the Platteville Main Street program.
I would second that.
The motion is seconded to take the $400 from the Tourism Committee and move it into the Main Street program.
And, and I have to say that the reason I'm supporting that is because the Music in the Park program was originally a city. It was, it was run through the Parks and Rec Department. And when there, I, I would say that it was difficult, there were some difficulties with that. And Main Street offered to take that over. And I think that it has really grown since Main Street has taken that over. And I view that as a very definite plus for the citizens of Platteville to have that on a consistent basis. I agree that in inclement weather, when the theater's all repaired, we can do it inside as well. So I think that that particular program has great value, the Music in the Park. And I would really like to see that receive some funding, more than the 500, because I, I really don't think that's going to, you know, maybe that would pay for one group or something, but... And, and the other thing I like about it is, is that it's matching. I mean, the Main Street program will match whatever is allocated from the Arts Board. And so if $900 total is allocated this evening, then they would also raise $900 to match that. And I also like that whole idea, I don't know, Patrice, if that was part of your thought or not, about the actual $6,000 that would be allocated to the theater, that that would be matched before it would be spent. Because I think that's a really good way to, to approach it.
Oh yeah. I mean, we're being very careful with...
I know you are.
Because $125,000 frankly isn't going to do everything.
So anyway, that's why I support Ken's motion. I, I think that Music in the Park is, is a very worthwhile project that I would really like to see have...
Well, I have no objection to that.
Any other discussion about the motion to amend? Roll call vote on the motion to amend to move the $400 from the Tourism Committee into the Main Street program.
Becker?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're back to the original motion as now amended. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on that one, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to information and discussion items tonight. Item A is a resolution regarding billing rates for brush pickup. We've had a few conversations about implementing a fee for brush pickup. The ADAT's resolution suggests $25 for brush pickup, as well as there's a task flyer that would indicate the procedures for people.
I have a question. Were we going to get some more information about grass clipping pickup also?
Yes.
To this?
One of the things that we've done is we followed up to our work session and we changed the dates of the brush pickup on, to option A. So if you look at the flyer, upper right-hand corner, it says option A. And the reason we did that was because we wanted to create option B in case the council goes in the other direction and doesn't charge a fee. So option V, B says no fee for brush. If there is no fee, then we assume that there will be more brush to pick up, in which case we did not match the dates for the brush pickup to the dates of the yard waste. Because the brush pickup would exceed the, the amount that we think is acceptable for picking up with yard waste. We would have to chip it if there was a lot of brush pickup. The next page shows the brush collection on the bottom of the page. It was requested by the council that the number of truckloads be added to the description. And I think that's perhaps what you were looking for, Barb?
Actually, Council Killian.
Mr. Killian was looking for that?
Yeah.
Yep. So we've tried to bring back the information that you requested. And then the last page shows, obviously, some, it's a worksheet you've seen before.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I also have another question. The, when, when the city does brush pickup and the chipper comes by and chips stuff, how much of that is used in our own parks?
We use some of it. I think the university uses a lot of it. I don't know exactly how much, but the, as you can see, the vast majority over the last couple of years was hauled away for its DTE energy for, for the biomass burning.
So they picked it up at the dump? Or at the compost site? I guess I can't call it the dump.
Yes, that's correct.
I believe that this is a significant, that the university uses quite a bit of our, our chipped brush. They use that all over campus.
So my question is, is if we diminish the amount of brown, brush pickup to the point that we aren't picking up brush because nobody wants to pay and therefore we don't have anything chipped of our own, will then we have to buy chipped, chips for our own parks?
Well, we will still have, we'll still have chips from, from trees and branches that fall in the right of way and the trees and branches in our parks, through our tree management plan, we will be needing to dispose of those ourselves and we'll be getting the chips from those.
And we're assuming that that will be enough for our own use? But we don't know, we may have to in fact buy chips.
But the other, the other solution is when people bring their items out to the compost site, if we believe that we need more, we can chip more onsite if we need to. If we need it.
Option B?
Yes.
If we went with option B, what difference would it be from what we're doing right now?
You see reduced number of days?
Just reducing a few days pickup, but essentially, if you go with option B, it's, we're just really doing just exactly what we're doing right now and...
Just reducing a few...
Reducing a couple of days of pickup.
Okay, that's correct.
Question. What about yard waste pickup?
Still 10 days.
You have it every Thursday, could that be reduced?
Yeah, but I think now they're doing it...
We talked about that, didn't we?
Yeah, we talked about it briefly. I think right now, yard waste is utilized to the point where it would be difficult to reduce that. I don't know, Howard, do you want to add anything?
I don't have any other suggestions at this point.
If the city council wants to look at changing yard waste, we can reduce the number of days we pick up yard waste or charge more for the yard waste bags. That's certainly an option.
And my other question is, I've received a comment and we've heard it, I'm sure, is that the city crews, crews the streets looking for brush to chip. Now, on this, on this last, second to last page, you have the comment here that under current policy, the crews estimate that 75 to 80% of the streets have at least one pile of brush per pickup. Is there a way with GPS to identify those streets that don't have brush pickup? If you had a call-in system, could you develop a call-in system that would automatically tell you the streets that you shouldn't pick up brush on?
Under option A, we're, we're requiring people to call in and then...
But you have somebody, you have somebody sitting there taking the call...
Yes.
And recording that. I'm asking the question whether there's any way you can do it via software that it's automatic.
I, I'm sure there is, but you're going to need a staff member to enter that information or make it available to the public and assume that public will enter that information. Given the amount of brush pickup without a fee, I, I think you're going to have an awful lot of GPS locations that you have to stop at. If you had the fee, that would reduce it significantly.
I'm saying that take out the streets that don't have brush. Which would be 20% of the streets. So you go out and arrest them.
I don't believe that, I don't know for certain. I would have to ask my crews to see whether or not there are the same streets in that 20% every time that they do this.
Still got to have somebody enter all that information into the computer.
This is really getting crazy.
What I believe you're saying is that, as an example, Sunset Drive, just as a name of a street, if Sunset Drive had zero brush...
You wouldn't go there.
You wouldn't go there. But what I'm saying is, there's no, no way that you can say that, that this week they don't have brush and next week they would have brush, or the next pickup they would.
I'm just asking the question, could you base it upon call-in?
That's why we're talking about, under option A, a call-in where someone lists...
Yeah, I'm trying to eliminate the person.
But couldn't, I, I believe, Ken's question is, couldn't option B also involve a call-in? You don't have to have a charge just because you have a call-in. You could have a call-in without a charge.
The answer is yes. The answer is yes. You're just dealing with a significantly larger volume.
Right.
All right, Steve? This, this is sounding like we're talking about parking. I don't, I, I'm really thinking that myself, when this comes up, we leave it next time for a vote, I'm thinking we should just leave it alone, not do anything. And maybe next summer, when we're talking about the budget and we're looking at all this stuff, that's when we should be sitting around talking about this stuff, but not at a city council meeting like this.
You missed our work session of an hour talking about this.
Yeah, well, I'm glad I did.
Steve, we're really sorry you missed it.
Glad, I'm glad I missed it. Michael Mayo has indicated he'd like to speak about this issue.
Michael Mayo, 375 South Chestnut Street. In just listening to the conversation with regards to this quote-unquote bulk pickup for, and trees and what have you, we are deciding that, for the most part, we're using it in our own park. And secondly, it's going to the university. I mean, this is a service that's well-needed for a lot of our senior citizens here in this town and for the disabled that are here in this town, myself included. But we're talking about a service that's going to benefit who? Right now, it's the city and the university. And yet, we have to be charged as citizens to give, have our brush picked up and that the university's going to deal with? They're going to be using, the principal users of it? If we're going to charge anybody, let's charge the user. Let's charge the individual who is going to receive the most benefit of that. DTE for their bio-waste program, the University of Wisconsin Platteville that uses a tremendous amount of this mulch. And yet, the residents can then donate it to the city. It makes common sense. Yes, it involves something, but that's what we pay taxes for. That's what we go ahead and every, twice a year, write out those checks for. Why can't the city provide a service for its residents? We're not asking to have it, you know, you know, come into my yard and pick it up for me. No, tell me if it's going to be the first Monday of the month, the second Wednesday, the fourth Tuesday, I don't care. But during the summer, make it available. That's what a clean community does. And then, since, and since we're going to be selling, or rather, are we giving the money, the, a, a brush to DTE? Or are we selling it to them? I ask that question. Is there an answer? Ladies and gentlemen of council, I'm asking you a question.
I, I don't think we're ever obligated to engage people who are speaking to us. And so, you can ask the question, but the council can choose or not to answer.
In other words...
And I don't personally know the answer to that question, but I don't think you can stand there and demand any answer from us. And I, you know, I appreciate the question.
Write of information says I can. That says that you should tell the residents of this town what you're doing, that you should be accountable. And if you're telling me and the members here, the people here, that whatever doesn't go to the university goes to DTE for biomass, I certainly hope they're paying for it. Because that will offset any cost to the residents. We have too many seniors and too many disabled for it not to be. And Steve, you're 100% right. This is as bad as park.
I want to note one other thing here. This came up originally because, as everyone knows, we have budget issues in this city. And part of what we're trying to do here is eliminate superfluous city services or city services that cost a tremendous amount of money to provide in order to find ways that we can shift money into capital. When you're paying people to drive around in trucks somewhere in the neighborhood of $33 an hour, including benefits, to drive around looking for something to pick up, some of us kind of feel like maybe that's an awful lot of money to spend on a service like that. And if you have a couple, three neighbors next to each other who might put their pile of trash together and have it picked up and share the cost, or heaven forbid, a neighbor might help out a disabled neighbor or they might offer their pickup truck. Heaven forbid that neighbors might be neighbors. We might be able to start getting a handle on some of these services. We can't keep providing everything to everybody without looking at the fiscal responsibility that we have toward the city. We just can't keep doing that forever. And we can say it's this, it's, it's that, but we're going to have to find some ways to, to do some cuts and maybe not this, but either that or we'll stop doing roads at some point. People have to decide what they want.
I favor option B for the minimum of pickup dates.
And I would like to see the call-in added to option B. There, I can see no reason why we would continue brush pickup without a call-in system. I mean, if, if it's call-in to be charged, then why can't it just be call-in if you need your brush picked up? If you don't call in, then the truck's not going to come there. Then, what Steve said would be true. There wouldn't be a need to go down streets where people hadn't called in.
But, but my point is, if we're covering 80 percent of the streets, you're only leaving out 20 percent.
Well, good thing we don't have to go on that 20 percent.
You're spending a lot of time to come up with a list.
Try to find somewhere else to save money, but sooner or later, you're going to have to save money. You can't just keep spending it as if it's coming in, as if we're the federal government and printing it all the time. We can't print our own money. Got to find places to save money here. And if we're going to be constantly finding reasons why we can't, we're going to end up exactly where we deserve. Next on information is bike racks in parks. Community Safe Routes would like to recommend the use of park impact fees to install 12 bike racks to hold up eight bikes each and one bike rack for, bike rack for up to six bikes. Some question about what color they should be. God, I hope they're all black.
Actually, I would like to ask that question because the, the committee recommends that half would be black and half would be safety yellow. And the comment in our information here is that staff is concerned that safety yellow may detract from the character of the park settings, but it doesn't say what staff would recommend in terms of color.
Or black.
Well, I honestly, I'm a little surprised it's coming to the council for a decision. It seems like if the, if the motion has already been made to do it half-black and half-yellow, that that's what the committee recommended. But at least, I would like to know what staff is recommending then.
Because it's a committee and no longer a commission, these issues do come to the city council for spending park impact fees.
Well, they, they have a recommendation of half-black and half-yellow. What does staff recommend?
All black.
All black.
We would recommend all black.
And the staff is, is Howard and Jordan.
Okay. They, let's see, the safety yellow may detract from the character of the park settings. Okay.
Or was it that the committee was split on the decision?
Just make them all black.
All black.
We can unsplit it real fast.
The Park Forestry and Recreation Committee, as it says in here, recommended some be brightly colored to draw attention to them, to encourage their use.
Well, if you're a cyclist, wouldn't you know to look around?
Yeah, but the first time they use it, they'll know it's there the next time.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the fact, though, we have nice colorful playground equipment in parks. So, it just didn't seem like colorful bike racks would be an issue, but...
Item C is ordinance amending the official traffic map with no parking loading zone on the east side of Roundtree Commons. Apparently, it's not signed in that, that bump in there where they can pull in to unload stuff. People are parking there and there are no signage, issues there that can actually prohibit them from parking there.
That's correct.
Like to change that sign so that will be the case. And item D, under information, a resolution requesting the absence of need exemption from Wisconsin Department of Transportation Administrative Code 75. This is a requirement to put a sidewalk in the industry park on a street that we're putting in?
Yes. In order to be, to receive a TEA grant, Transportation Economic Assistance Grant, you have to meet certain criteria. And one of those is for the complete streets, you need pedestrian accommodations unless you do an absence of need, request an absence of need exemption. And it requires this paperwork in order to do that. We're talking about that 800 feet of Evergreen Road. And we don't believe that, that there is a need to do that at this point.
Has, has this been to the Safe Routes Committee?
No.
I guess we're probably thinking there aren't going to be a lot of children walking to school in the industry park.
I understand that, but I still think it would be appropriate for the Safe Routes Committee to review it. We have a hospital, we have other items in that area. It seems to me like, I don't, I'm, I'm not looking at those things. They're looking at those all the time. It seems appropriate that they would at least have a look at it.
If you feel such, you can refer to there.
Want to send it to the Safe Routes Committee?
Sure. Why not?
Want to send it to Safe Routes? Send it to the Safe Routes Committee.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, we did get the, you want to go ahead and do that? All right. Steve, want to update us on tourism report?
I just, it's not, the Tourism, Tourism Committee has submitted this report, everybody, and handed it out tonight. And there's a letter in there from Deb Jenny. She could not attend the meeting tonight, basically saying that this is the annual tourism entity annual report for 2012. It was approved by the Tourism Committee. And if you look, if this, it will be on the agenda for next meeting. They were required to submit it by the last, I think, the last meeting in February. This had to be submitted. That's why it's here tonight. And it gives the, there's the budget for 2013 plus the financial statements for 2012. And the financial statements, there's, it's similar to what's been in the past, but the financial statements have been changed to provide a little different, a little better information. So, look at it and we'll discuss it next time.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of other stuff in there. Pretty good report.
We will, I'll, I'll need a motion. So, we're going to move into work session, cameras off to meet with UW-Platteville and then to meet with Second Street business owners to discuss alcohol-related issues. And following that, we'll go into closed session regarding city manager performance evaluation. Will anybody make a motion to that effect, please?
I move we go into work session and then closed session for Wisconsin statutes 198.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In this case, city manager performance evaluation.
And then, return to open session.
And then, return to open session.
Second?
To adjourn. The motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll move back to discuss things with the university.